...of Overtown so that you can have input from the very beginning. There's no plans made as of yet. They only decided to come to this area about two weeks ago. So there's no plans. What I want, for the first time, is for the residents to give their recommendations, their advice, their ideas, and be there from the very start. So that if they decide to build a stadium, then they've already got your input. And this will not be the first time and it will not be the last time that we come before you. But right now, this is the beginning, and I want this community to take a part. So we're looking for your suggestions, your ideas, your advice, and what you're looking for for your communities and what you don't want. Please, we're giving you about a minute each to speak because this is a crowded room. I hope we don't go over the capacity. Uh, but we'll give each person a minute to speak and just tell us what your recommendations are. We just want to hear from you. Uh, we have not, uh, I have not, I can't speak for anybody else. I have not given my support as of yet because I have not seen any plans because there's no plans. That's why we're here, for you to help them put together some plans. I want Major League Soccer in my district. I would love to have it in my district. I'm not gonna stand here and say that. Don't do that. I want to see people in Overtown, people in Spring Gardens, those who are looking for work, to have work. I want to see it. But I also want to see what these plans are going to look like. So I'm here to hear from you, the residents of the Overtown area, even though Spring Gardens is in Commissioner Barrero's, uh, district. It used to be in my district, so I wanna hear from you as well. Uh, I have, um, some questions that I'll probably be asking, but I'll, I can ask those later. I would just wanna hear what you have to say today. So with that, uh, I'm gonna look forward to this dialogue. And all I want us to do, please don't come up with what you've heard. Come up and give them some suggestions because everything you have heard are rumors and misinformation because there are no plans. Nothing. I just want the community to be on top in front. So with that, Mayor Jimenez.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, um, and again, I wanna thank everybody for coming out here for this presentation. And as the Commissioner said, there are no plans. This is, we wanna get your concerns. We wanna also get, wanna make sure that MLS is a, a part of this community and that MLS not only embraces the community, but the community embraces MLS. And I'm sure that that's what they're here to do. There, as the Commissioner has stated, there have been already rumors which are completely false that somehow the public housing units are not gonna be here anymore. That's completely false. The, uh, the area in question is, is bounded by Seventh Avenue on the west, it's Sixth Avenue on the east, Sixth Street on the south, Eighth Street on, on the north. And that's the, the MLS, uh, the folks from MLS have an option on some private property there. And they need, in order to square that off, they need some property from Miami-Dade County utilizing what in the Florida statute is an economic development statute. Which means, in order for us to sell the property at fair market to MLS, we need to make sure there's economic development benefit to the area, to the citizens, to the residents of the, of this area and the, and this community. And so as the Commissioner has stated, we're here to listen from you. What are your concerns? But also, what are your ideas? You know, how can, uh, Major League Soccer and the deal that we have to craft with Major League Soccer, uh, we wanna make sure that it's a benefit, uh, to this community. And, uh, and so there, if you don't see many plans for Major League Soccer, it's because that's a good thing. Because a lot of times, most people come in, "Here's our plans. What do you think about them?" "I think we're doing this the right way." Need to hear from you. And then some of the, the plans can be crafted so that the needs of the Overtown community and other communities in the area are taken into consideration, as well as the needs of Miami-Dade County and its residents. I, like Commissioner Edmondson, uh, we want, uh, Major League Soccer to be in, uh, in Miami-Dade County. We want, uh, the David Beckham brand to be here in Miami-Dade County. But we wanna make sure that it's, it's brought here in the right way so that everybody can benefit. That we have a great Major League Soccer league team here, but also something that the residents of the area can be very, very proud of. And so I would ask that, if you have any, any people come to you and say, "I heard this, I heard that," we're gonna give you a number, uh, you know, at, at the end of this meeting that you can call to verify whether what so-and-so told you is, uh, is true or not. We want this to be a very transparent process. We want you to be involved, and we wanna give you absolutely the correct information at all times during, uh, during this process. And so, uh, I look forward to, to listening to the conversation and to getting the ideas from everybody in this room. Commissioner Barrera, do you want to, to get up and say? Okay. All right, with that, I'm gonna leave it, Commissioner Barrera, and then I, I would hope that we can have Tim Lewicki from, uh, Major League Soccer put a, a brief presentation.
Thank you. Glad to be here in District 3, my neighboring, uh, district. Well, definitely, I wanna have, uh, I wanna keep, uh, Major League Soccer here in Miami-Dade County and do everything possible to make it happen. Um, I, as long as it's, uh, as long as the team is a good neighbor to the residents and that the residents also, um, want, um, the team, um, I think there's, should be no reason to, for it not to be, whether it's, uh, District 3 or wherever they want, uh, the team to, to have its, uh, its stadium. The issues, um, this is the beginning, I believe, of the dialogue. Um, as we've stated, two weeks ago, they announced, uh, this site, and, and I think it'll be a, a dialogue from here to, for, for several more weeks until everything is a, is ironed out and the neighborhood feels comfortable with it. Uh, Spring Gardens is a part of my district, and we're gonna make sure that their issues are, are addressed. Issues of, obviously, we have no traffic, parking, and, and everything else is needed to make sure it's a good neighbor, uh, to, to, uh, to the area. And I will defer to the Commissioner of the area, of the district, to, to make sure that obviously a lot of those issues, uh, are addressed. And we'll work together. We'll work together. But you, but you'll be the lead, um, on this one. But, uh, I look forward to, to hearing your, your concerns. Thank you very much for having me here.
Good evening. My name's Tim Lewicki. Uh, just to give you a little bit of background, I'm the ugly partner, uh, in Major League Soccer in Miami. You, you know I'm referring to Simon. I first wanna thank, I'm not sure if she's in the room, but Barbara in the YWCA. Barbara, you're here. Thank you very much for hosting us. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Barbara gave me a tour of the facility. It's amazing what she's doing here, and we're looking forward to being not only your neighbor, but, uh, your partner. So, thank you. I also wanna thank the Commissioners, Commissioner Edmondson. We had a chance today to meet with her and, and make sure we understood what we were doing here tonight. Uh, and, uh, she repeated to us exactly what you just heard, which is, this is the beginning of a dialogue. This is the beginning of a partnership, and this is the beginning of a vision. And we are gonna try to, uh, create this vision together and implement this vision together. And so we stand here tonight to learn. I also wanna thank the mayor. He has been with us through thick and thin. We, this is not our first, uh, location. I didn't join the group until a few months ago, but I'm well aware that we had two other locations before I joined. We were working on the Marlins site. Uh, we had some issues there. Uh, we began to look at this site, and we began to be, um, encouraged and enamored by the neighborhood. Uh, I actually very much like the neighborhood here, and I believe there's a way that we could create this vision and fit into the neighborhood and make it better for everybody. And obviously, we are gonna be very active at reaching out to the other neighborhoods in and around, including Commissioner Barrero's neighborhood, uh, where I've driven and walked through Spring Gardens, so I understand they're gonna have some unique needs, some unique views, and some unique requests out of us. So, again, we're here tonight to learn, uh, to listen, and to hopefully begin to develop a dialogue in how we make this better. Um, we, we have another entity that we, we pay attention to, which is the league. So Major League Soccer, granted David Beckham and Simon Fuller, a right to operate a, a franchise as part of David Beckham coming over and joining our league many years ago. I, in fact, negotiated that deal with David in Los Angeles when I was the president of AG. So I've known David, recruited David, brought him here, actually crafted this particular option, and I have, uh, a feeling and a commitment that I should help him finish this off, and I can't think of a better place for David to do it than Miami. The, the league has us under a timeline, and so we, we do pay attention to that. Uh, we will lose this option, and Miami will lose its opportunity to have an MLS club if we don't find a suitable home. And so, uh, over the two-year process, there have been some owners that have lost faith in Miami. Uh, over the two-year process, there have been other communities like Sacramento and San Diego and San Antonio that believe they should jump ahead of Miami for an MLS franchise. Uh, we're gonna have a lot of input and back and forth on how we do this right. But the one thing I've promised the mayor, we're not gonna lose this chance to bring Major League Soccer to Miami. About two weeks ago, during the MLS Board of Governors' annual meeting, we presented to them this site. Uh, we showed them, you're gonna see a rough, uh, what we did is we took the old building and just plopped it down on this site. This is not, as, as you heard from the Commissioner, this is not the building that we're gonna build here, but we wanted to demonstrate it would work here. We wanted to demonstrate that the site, in fact, would, would work and the stadium would fit on that site. So you'll see what they saw. And they unanimously approved this site. Uh, they came in and brought a team of experts that spent a week looking at this neighborhood, looking at the site, looking at our plans for, uh, mitigating traffic. Uh, they, they, like us, are very committed to building the most green stadium in the history of Major League Soccer. An L-E-E-D certified stadium and a stadium that is built by and operated by this community. So they, they encouraged us to proceed. They have voted in favor of the site, and now we had to go back before them, uh, in the very near future with our ownership group and with our financing plan to show that this can work. So let me give you just a brief, uh, overview of what we're trying to do here and how we're going to try to do it. Uh, as I said, uh, I've, I've spent 38 years in professional sports. Uh, this would be about my 20th stadium arena that I've built. Uh, I've built everything from Staples Center and the Home Depot Center, Stuff Hub Center in Los Angeles, to the Chicago Stadium, to the Houston Stadium. Uh, we've even built arenas in London, uh, in Beijing, in Shanghai, and in Berlin. So we've worked in some tough places. We've worked in some tough neighborhoods. Never had one lawsuit, never had one complaint, never had one unfulfilled commitment in 38 years of doing this, and we certainly are not gonna start here. So we come here with experience, we come here with knowledge, we come here with a track record, and we come here, uh, with a commitment towards trying to make this work for this community and for the city. Um, we are very active in the community. So I personally believe that these sports teams are platforms to impact in particular kids. Sports figures have an amazing impact on kids. We can help get their attention, we could help guide them the right way, we could help teach them, uh, life's lessons, we could help get them out of the holes they occasionally can dig for themselves. I believe that, that this platform in Miami with soccer as the world's most popular sport is a tremendous opportunity to have an impact on the kids and the youth of this community and of the city, and we're gonna do it. We will be very active in the community. David believes in this, Simon believes in this, and this has been a mainstay for me for 38 years of operating sports franchises and being a part of communities. So you're gonna hear a lot about our outreach, you're gonna hear a lot about commitments we're prepared to make. We've already made a substantial commitment to be a part of the Miami-Dade School District, and the, the Superintendent, Alberto, and us continue to have that commitment even if we change sites. We are gonna be active, not just in sports and not just in their community programs, but also with band, with music, with arts, and with culture. Uh, MLS as a league has been renowned and, in fact, has been, uh, awarded some of the highest honors for their commitment in the community, their diversification, and their ability to take soccer, the world's great sport, and use it as a platform to change kids' lives. So you could go look at all of the different initiatives that the league has, and you'll begin to see a lot of the initiatives we're gonna bring here to Miami and to Miami-Dade. In addition to that, our partners are very active. Uh, everything from building soccer fields, uh, in the community, which is something we wanna do. So where we have community centers, youth centers that need a soccer field, uh, need an upgrade, uh, we're going to be active in doing that. We wanna make sure that we allow any kid in this community that wants to play soccer an opportunity to play soccer. So every team, and we encourage you to go to websites, every team has an active not-for-profit foundation. There is a track record here, and you could go check on MLS sites to see what these teams do in their community, the impact they've made, the way they conduct themselves, the way the players conduct themselves, and the outreach. You can pretty well assume, we're not only going to do everything you see these other teams doing, but more here. We are committed to creating a not-for-profit foundation. It will be very active with the mayor and the community, very active with the superintendent and the schools, and very active with those organizations that are located in this community that we can make an impact with. So, we, we have a unique ownership group. David Beckham and Simon Fuller, uh, started this push. Uh, they are, David is the chairman, he will be the governor. Uh, I will join them as a, uh, part owner, so I'm investing my, my money and my family's money into this because I believe in Miami. Uh, Marcelo is an active partner, uh, the president and CEO of Sprint. He is, uh, part of this community or grew up in this community, and will continue to be a part of this group as well. And we expect in the near future, you'll hear us, um, announce another partner that we will be bringing in, that will also bring with them resources and the financial ability to build the stadium. The, I wanna make this point loud and clear because I know there's been some miscommunication. So first and foremost, we are buying the site. We're not asking for the county, uh, to ultimately give us the land. We are paying a fair market value for the site, and we have a contract with the private property owners for that particular site. So unlike, uh, our last site that we chose where we couldn't come to terms, we have come to terms on this and have a process with the county where they will assess the value of their property, we will pay fair market value, and we will write them a check. We are not asking them to give us anything. In addition to that, we will privately build the stadium. We are not asking the city or the county for a penny. There will be no subsidies, period. And I heard even today, some people came up and said, "Well, the CRA is gonna pay for it." Not true. Your tax dollars should go to schools, education, transportation, and safety. We're not gonna take your tax dollars for a soccer stadium. We'll build it privately. You have our word on that. Finally, there's been conversations about us not ultimately paying property tax. That's not true. We will be assessed a, uh, valuation on our property, and we will pay a property tax back to the city and the county. We're not asking for relief, and we're not trying to make sure we get out of that obligation. The stadium will be privately operated, privately funded, we will pay our property taxes, and we will put the capital up to keep the stadium in a first-class condition throughout its term. So, the other thing you need to understand that is our track record, and again, we have 38 years' worth of these projects. Uh, we are going to seek out LED certification. So we want this to be the most environmentally friendly and the most green stadium ever built in Major League Soccer. So for those of you that live in this neighborhood, our commitment is to build you a world-class venue that is also the most environmentally friendly green stadium ever built in the history of Major League Soccer. If we have a path to gold, we're gonna try to get there. It's the hardest, most difficult certification to get, but it is certainly something we will try to achieve if we can. In addition to that, we've heard a lot of conversations and people questioning, "Not enough parking, and we're gonna have to build lots of parking garages." We believe it's time to build a stadium. We believe it's time in Miami to build a point of destination that is geared towards mass transportation. And so what we're not, what we're not gonna do at the end of the day is take your neighborhood and build a bunch of concrete structures that are used 30 times a year. The city, under its leadership, the county, uh, under its leadership, have made a commitment to mass transportation. Well, we're gonna use it. Soccer is a unique sport. It's a community sport. It's a social sport. We're used to walking to the game. The march to the game is a great tradition in soccer, and we're certainly gonna use it here for our supporters as part of what we create as a tradition in Miami. There are 6,800 parking spaces within a half a mile of this stadium. There is heavy rail and light rail, and new stations being built as we speak, within three or four blocks of this stadium. You have this magnificent asset called the Miami River that we believe we could begin to utilize to bring people in and out of the stadium site. So the other commitment we're gonna make here is, building parking garages next to the stadium means we polarize your community 30 times a year, 25 times a year, however many soccer games we play. We're not gonna do that. We're gonna find a way to make sure that this improves the neighborhood, improves the experience, and that we don't take property and build parking garages that are gonna be used 30 times a year. In addition to that, we're gonna try to figure out a way so that we complement the neighborhood. So, we're, we're not gonna build a lot of retail. We've looked at the other facilities in town, and we know what they did. Uh, we wanna make the retail that's there better, the restaurants, the bars, uh, whatever commercial businesses are there. Our job is not to compete with you. Our job is to try to ultimately build a soccer stadium, and that's what we're gonna do. We will be active in trying to do other events, but the reality is, this will be a palace for the sport of soccer. It'll be committed towards soccer. If we could do some additional things with the school district for some of their, uh, band competitions, uh, some of their football games, we will. But at the end of the day, we're a soccer stadium. We're not a shopping center, we're not a retail mall, and we're not gonna build lots of restaurants that compete with the restaurants in the district. Finally, we will build this on time, uh, we will build this on budget, and we will build this safely. And we will build it with workers and contractors and businesses that are part of this community. We will be committed to diversity. We will look towards the neighborhood and look towards the city and the county, and we will utilize, whenever humanly possible, uh, businesses and developers and subcontractors that are a part of this community to help build the stadium. This is your stadium. We may be paying for it, but at the end of the day, we want you to build it. And every chance we have to be a mirror image of our community in Miami, with the people that build it, the companies that build it, and the people that work at the stadium, we will be a mirror image of this community. You have our commitment, our diversity of the stadium and the people that will build it. So, let me just quickly show you a, a, a look of what this, we just simply took the stadium that was gonna be built in Marlins and plopped it down. Uh, I can guarantee it's not gonna look like this because, as you heard from both Commissioners, this is a work in progress, and we're just starting this. This will be designed based on, to a large extent, your input, and I promise our lights will never go out as well. So, this is for the purpose of showing the Board of Governors of Major League Soccer that the stadium actually fits on the site. It does. Uh, this is a 25,000-seat stadium. Uh, we're committed to building a roof. Uh, we, we believe in Miami. We have to cover the seats, so we will. Uh, we're committed, though, that this will be an open-air stadium with a grass field. It's important that we play on grass for our players. That allows us to get the best players in the world that wanna come and play in Miami. Uh, but we will build a stadium that can situate itself well on that site and be able to get people in and out of the stadium. We are asking the city for, uh, the ability to vacate Seventh Street, which will go in the middle of this. We're working through that process as we speak, and we believe we have, uh, an agreement in principle about the timing of that particular process. Again, this is a rough design. It is a first look. It, it, it will not end up, my, my bet is, it will not end up looking like this. But we have budgeted about $220 million to privatize the stadium and build it here. And, uh, this is a, a, a fairly good indication of the scope of the stadium and how it will sit on the site. Finally, we are building a training center here. Uh, we're building an academy here. We will build that first. We are committed to being in the development business for soccer. Uh, we're committed to building the best training and academy in Major League Soccer. We have identified a site. We will be working on that site in the near future. We will actually be up and operating with our training, development, and academy before we even have the stadium up and, and operating. And again, that will be a mirror image of the community. So the kids will come from Miami, the kids will come from this region. We will give them a world-class academy that they aspire to be a part of, and we will underwrite 100% of the cost of that academy and those training fields as well. So with that, we're gonna turn this over to you. Uh, we will, we will turn the meeting back to the Commissioner and let her, uh, begin to decide how you give us input and questions you may have on our project. And, uh, last but not least, a great turnout tonight. I appreciate everybody spending your evening with us, giving you the feedback, and in particular, I appreciate the neighborhood with an openness to finding us a new home for Major League Soccer in Miami. Thank you.
We'll, we'll get started. I'm going to ask that, when you come up to the mic, that you first give your name and address. It could be business address, uh, home address, what we do need for the record because this is a public hearing, uh, or public records, what I was told, type meeting. Uh, so, we would like to hear your recommendations and your concerns and, uh, advice. This is the beginning. There's no plan. We want to incorporate a lot of your, your suggestions into the plan that they're doing. So they're here to hear what you have to say and what you want in your community. So if there's anyone here that wants to start, please state your name and your address first, and then...
My name is Liliana Ariola.
Can we do this quietly, please?
My name is Liliana Ariola. I live at District 5, Commissioner Barrero. 800-133-DAMN, Apartment 1014, Miami, Florida, 33125. I am also founder of SOS Save Our Seniors, and I am glad that you will decide in favor of MLS. I'm sorry that it was not done in my district, but as long as I'm walking distance, I'd rather take my walker and go. I have been invited by that, uh, area to see how we get there. I think the stadium is a plus to the city, to the county. If we ever thought that Alex Panella did good, changed in Miami-Dade, when it was to be Dade County instead of being Dade County to Miami-Dade, gentlemen, ma'am, we have a big surprise. David Beckham will be known worldwide in Miami.
Okay, thank you.
Miami will be proud. So positive, please.
Thank you. Again, let's keep our comments to one minute because we're, we're out of here about seven o'clock, and we, I see we have a lot of people standing in that line. So let's keep, let's keep these, uh, comments short.
Commissioner Eric Knowles, President of the Miami-Dade Chamber of Commerce, 100 South Discane Boulevard. Tim, thank you for your presentation. A lot of things that you said I may repeat, and I'm gonna read from my list of items that I have, so I do not leave anything out. Employment, obviously, is important for the residents in this community, not just in the beginning or the construction of the, the facility, but ongoing employment. And that means including members of the chamber, members of this community from an architectural, uh, design, participation, engineering, and other soft, uh, opportunities that may be possible, from accountants, lawyers, et cetera, being injected into this, uh, facility. Operations. Operations. We need to have folks that come from this community, that look like this community, be involved in the ongoing operations of the facility, the day-to-day operations of the facility, not just on game day, part-time employees. Also, upper management. Who is going to manage the facility? We need to make sure that the management of the facility, not just in lower echelon, but upper echelon, management of this facility should be included. Community benefits, the business of sports. One thing, young men and young ladies, you know, they look to be the next LeBron, but they're not taught how to run a facility. They're not taught how to manage a facility. So I think it's very important, when you're doing this, uh, academy, that you include management of facilities. When you think about the sports from football, baseball, there's only 1% that may make it to the, um, major leagues, but there are millions, hundreds of thousands of facilities across this country, from college to, to, uh, professional that can be managed. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Well, wait till you say your name, Robert.
My name is Richard P. Dunn II, pastor of Faith Community Baptist Church in Miami. My address, home address is 1895 Northwest 57th Street. Miami resident for over 20 years. First of all, I wanna say to you... First of all, I wanna say to you commissioners, to the mayor, to Tim, I wanna thank you for what you're trying to do. We want soccer. But what we don't want is the same old, same old. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lou, we're still waiting in Liberty Square for you to talk to us. You made a promise two weeks ago, and we haven't heard anything. Two weeks ago, service. You made a promise that you didn't keep, and I don't like people who make promises that they don't keep. Let me just say this, and I'm gonna say, let me wrap it up, let me wrap it up.
All right, let's keep it going.
I'll wrap it up, Commissioner. Let me wrap it up. You made a promise, sir, and you made a promise, not just to me, but to the residents of Liberty Square. I'm all for building stadiums, but human lives are more important than stadiums.
Okay, Reverend.
Now, let me just say, let me just say, I wrap it up, I wrap it up.
Okay, let's stay with soccer, Stephen.
Okay, let's stay with soccer. This has to be unapologetically about black folk finally not getting the short end of the stick in Miami-Dade County.
Thank you.
Can I give him my minute?
No, go ahead with your minute.
Once again, thank you for allowing us to come here this afternoon. Wonderful presentation.
Amen, Pastor.
This is important that Anthony, Reverend Dr. Anthony, today pastor of New Resurrection Community Church, former president of Pulse. It's important that we are not misleading, again, the residents in Dade County. I have a feeling that Major League Soccer is more important than some of the residents, the voting residents in our community. We have to make sure, we talk about transparency, we have to make sure that we're looking at the whole picture and not just one group of people, football, baseball, basketball, but we have people, lives at stake. There are people right now don't know whether they have to move, don't know where they're going, and we talking about soccer? Come on! Thank you.
My name is Adrian Moniz, eighteen-forty-one Northwest First Court. My neighborhood is Overtown. I'm a big soccer fan, as a Venezuelan, but I have some very serious concerns about what this soccer stadium will mean for the residents of my neighborhood. Time and time again, developers have come and looked for cheap land in pursuit of a quick buck, and if that is what's going to be happening here, the people of Overtown will not stand for it, and you will encounter a challenge unlike anything you've ever seen before. So, I'm hoping that you come in good faith to deal with the residents of Overtown as equals, and to make sure that you ask them for their permission on how it is that this stadium will benefit their community, because it will be in their neighborhood. And they don't need soccer stadiums, but maybe they would like soccer if they were given a chance. But they definitely need affordable housing, they definitely need opportunity for their kids, they definitely need to make sure there's an end to criminalization. Those are the things that they need, and if we can make sure that this stadium is a conduit for those needs to be met, I think that we can probably do business. But if not, then this will meet an obstacle unlike any other you've ever seen.
Okay, thank you. Wait, wait, one second, Reverend. Before we get started, like I said, this is the very beginning. We're here to hear your recommendations, your advice. We want to know what you want in your community, and we just continue to come up and dog people out, then you can say you lost your opportunity to give recommendations and to tell them what you want. I think when this is our community, and I think when we were raised, our moms always told us, never mistreat a person in your own house. So, let's not mistreat someone in our own house. Oh, I agree with that as well, but we're not gonna mistreat anyone here today.
Bishop James Adams, I'm the senior pastor of the St. John Institutional Missionary Baptist Church, a hundred-and-ten-year-old institution here in Overtown. I'm here to say unequivocally that Overtowners or Towners, as we are called, we're not afraid of development. What we are afraid of is previous processes, things that have already occurred, as in the Marlins Stadium, which was promised that it was gonna bring prosperity and wealth to the community, only to be bitterly disappointed. We don't want that to happen again. We're not against Major League Soccer. As a matter of fact, we look forward to development in Overtown, but not development that is designed to destroy a historic African-American enclave that has a tremendous history. I believe that there is a possibility for both Major League Soccer and the historic neighborhood to have a merger, to have a marriage. However, it cannot be done under the cloud of not being transparent. I think the issue that most of the people that I serve has been that this was dropped upon us, and then we're to get excited about something that we knew absolutely nothing about. I support my county commissioner, I support her, I appreciate you bringing us here to give us information, but rest assured, we will have our eyes watching this project every step of the way.
And I expect you all to do that.
Hello, my name is Adolfo Laranza, I'm representing the East Door, fourteen-fifty-one Northwest Third Avenue. Welcome, Timothy, to Overtown. Hopefully, you do, as you said, improve the community, and I'm happy that you said, while you were saying, that you're not here to compete with the businesses in Overtown. Thank you.
Shorty?
Good evening, Celia Nelson, one-thousand Northwest First Avenue, Suite one-hundred, three-three-one-three-six. I'm here on behalf of the Overtown Children and Youth Coalition, we're a stakeholder group of over twenty-three organizations that have a vested interest in improving the outcomes for young people in this community. When I talk to young people every day and I educate them about what's happening here, you know what they say to me? They say they see opportunity, and that's a great thing, but it's only gonna be an opportunity if they are provided access to the opportunity. And the Overtown Children and Youth Coalition looks forward to having continuing conversations about how we can create pathways to engage our young people meaningfully, and not only sports, but careers, in tourism, in hospitality, all those great things, and we'd love to continue the conversation about how we can do that in a real way. And for the record, we have it all written down, and I'd like to leave a copy for...
I already have one.
For the record?
Oh, they beat you to the punch.
I beat you, I beat you to the punch.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening.
Oh, it's Celia. I need me a copy now, 'cause I gave my copy.
Good evening, my name is Donlan Zamora. I actually live like two, three minutes away from here, is eight-eighteen Northwest Fourth Street, three-three-twenty-eight. What I wanna say today is that I agree with the build of the stadium here. I strongly believe that this project that David Beckman's doing is gonna affect the young kids, and as a parent, you guys should think about that, about the future of your kids, your kids love sport, support them, because this opportunity is not every day. And I strongly believe that me as a player, I see my teammates, I see the people I play with, and myself too, that we see future and we see a lot of talent here in South Florida, and I think that this is gonna benefit all of us as a parents too, like, because you're childrens, there's nothing better than the happiness of your childrens, and I also believe the... The... That's it.
My name is Sarah Ortiz, I'm nine years old.
Wait one second, Sarah. Can we calm down? In the back, we have a young lady here by the name of Sarah who would like to be heard.
My name is Sarah Ortiz, I'm nine years old, I live in Spring Garden. I don't want the stadium, because I already have people speeding by my house, and soccer will only make it worse, cars and more speeders. I want to safely ride my bike near my house. Thank you for your time, please don't build the stadium.
And thank you, Sarah.
Hi, I'm Meredith Bay, I live in Spring Garden, nine-nine-nine Northwest North River Drive, and I'm also Sarah's mom. I am not against progress, I'm certainly a fan of soccer, I love soccer, I'm married to Guatemalan, really into it, but I am not in favor of the stadium right near my backyard. I bought in Spring Garden about a year and a half ago, and we bought in this neighborhood because of a certain way of life. We wanted to live near downtown, we wanted to be in this historic gem that is not being protected, and we wanted to be in close proximity to her school in Win-Win. And this stadium is only going to bring noise, traffic, pollution. I hear a lot of words, but I see little in writing, and I get very nervous when I see a presentation that has a stadium already put on the property, then you tell me, it's not even gonna be that stadium, it's gonna be something different. Then why even show us what it's not gonna be? This feels like a dog and pony show to me, and I'm very nervous about that. You wanna rely on the Miami-Dade Metro? Well, let me tell you, I have to rely on that every day to go to work, and it is extremely unreliable, so you need to put some investment into that, and make sure that fans can get into the stadium, on the Metro rail and government center and wherever they have to change off from the people mover. I ride it every day, and every day I have problems. It is not safe, it's not clean, and I'm afraid that the stadium is gonna bring the same kind of thing. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Adrian Donahue, six-nine-one Northwest Seventh Street Road. I live in Spring Gardens, I'm a homeowner on the waterfront, and I'm really concerned about this project as well. Do you have any other sites in mind, or is this your last one?
This is it.
So, because there are other properties available along the water, along the river that are available, that would probably fit your needs better. If you're stuck on this one, you're within five-hundred feet, you're actually four-hundred-and-fifty feet from my front yard, which is a T-three zone district, so you need parking waivers, you wanna do street closures, you're gonna have problems with noise, our property value is gonna go down, you're gonna build a wall behind my house, and I, you know, I just don't understand how you're gonna mitigate that issue. Traffic, parking, the height, I mean, we're gonna fight with whatever waivers you apply for, we're going to be fighting this, so I'll let you know that now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Francis Corbato, I'm actually your neighbor. I live in six-forty-one Northwest Seventh Street Road. I actually own the yellow boathouse that's on that road right there. One of the first things that brought me into this neighborhood was just, you know, I guess the uniqueness of it, that it still looked like a neighborhood, and the proximity of everything around it. It took me about two years of going through everything, trying to find a home in this neighborhood, that they're very secluded in the sense that you can't find anything for sale. Finally, an opportunity arose, and I went in front of fifteen other cash bidders to bid for a house that's on there. I eventually won the house, and then I went through the process of preparing something that will satisfy everybody in the neighborhood and the headboard. Before I got to that point, there was an issue about a structure, putting on a greenway on this old Seaboard lot that we ended up, you know, settling, and, you know, for now, you know, we're just trying to promote more agree with in the neighborhood than what it is. Now, I ended up going through the headboard, and they all approved my project, and I'm actually waiting for my permits now to build, but imagine that my house has a sun deck that's above the pool, above the boathouse, and that sun deck faces your stadium. And literally, I can't even imagine, do you know what the height is of the stadium right now, or more or less?
No, there's no plans, like I said at first, at the beginning.
What's an average height?
There's no plans yet.
We haven't even started on the plans yet.
Oh, what's an average height of a stadium that you've ever built?
Figure four stories, but again, we haven't even begun designing a stadium.
All right, well, you're gonna cast a shadow upon my house and my boathouse for the rest of my life. You're gonna steal three hours of sun a day, you're gonna block all wind that comes from it, from six to eight feet, or what you're building on, it's gonna block absolutely all wind from it, you know, so I understand that, you know, there is a positive, and there is a light at the end of the tunnel for a majority of the people.
Okay, I'm giving you double the time that everybody else has.
Okay, but at the end of the day, I just don't wanna be railroaded at the end and just trucked over it because, you know, you're just that guy.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jomar Lamb, I'm an Overtown resident, six-sixty Northwest Tenth Street. We, except for y'all with open arms, but at the same time, we don't wanna be overworked, simple as that. What I mean by that is railroad, pushed out, left for dead, you know, the routine.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Willie L. Williams, I am the owner, business owner in Overtown. My family's been here for sixty-five years, serving this community as well as residence, residency is well-established in this community, and I have a church as well in the community as well, that has a beauty salon, barber shop, and herbal life. So, I'm looking forward to see progress in this community in a mighty way. You know, we have seen a lot of spokes screen that came through this community in the name of projects, and we just hoping that this is not another one of those. We need to see these things in writing, that's something that we can take to the courts and fight with, not just, you know, giving us a pretty presentation right now. We want everything that's in writing, and we want you to give us a chance to get together and get our thoughts together, what we want to, and how we wanna be a part of what you're trying to do. We're all for progress, we're all for going forward, but we all for the people, the businesses, the children, and the community. Thank you.
And thank you, Reverend. And that's why we're holding this meeting, so that we can see exactly what the community wants. Believe me, I learn from past mistakes, so we'll be watching. Thank you.
Reverend, if I could, it will be in writing, because the sale of our property, we have to use a Florida statute that says it has to do economic development, and so, we really need to know what it is that you're looking for, so that we can incorporate a lot of these things in writing, so that it is in writing, it's not just promises. So, that's exactly why we're here, to listen to you, to listen to the community, what are the wishes? You know, we wanna employ the people of the community, we wanna make sure that they get, you know, the bulk of the jobs, we wanna make sure that the construction jobs plus department jobs. And so, those are the things that we're looking at, how does, how will, you know, what you all want in terms of how you integrate, you know, this stadium into your community for your children, for the benefit of them, and so that basically it becomes part of the historic Overtown community. That's why we're here. There are no plans, and if somebody took offense to the fact that somebody put a stadium there, they have to show something that somehow would fit, all right? But that's not the stadium that's gonna be built. The stadium that's gonna be built, a lot of it is gonna come from your wishes, and, you know, most processes don't happen like this. We come and tell you, here's the stadium, here's what it's gonna look like, here's what we're gonna do for you, all right? We haven't, we haven't done that, okay? We're saying, okay, what is it you want, so that when it comes time to negotiating with Major League Soccer, we can incorporate that in writing, okay?
Okay, keep us updated, let us get together and brainstorm and see exactly what needs to be done.
Reverend, you will be updated, this is why I'm bringing the community at the very beginning. I want the community involved from the onset. This has only been in the makings for about two weeks, so you know there's no plans.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm looking for the same thing that you're looking, I have to represent you all. So, I'm looking to represent you in the way you want me to represent you.
We thank you for that.
Good evening. I'm Ernie McKnight, I am the Chair of the Overtown Community Oversight Board. Welcome, Commissioner Edlinson, welcome, Commissioner Bruno, who was our former Commissioner, and welcome, Mr. Jimenez, who was our former City Manager. I know these three people, because over the years I have dealt with them, but tonight the board met, and as its chairperson, I've been asked to say that we want a community benefit package, but we don't want some money thrown at anything. We want to work out the benefits, that should include vendors from Overtown. We need appointments, opportunities to sell raw material and goods to the building of the stadium. We need an impact study on what the economic effect on this community that the stadium will bring, especially Kamla Gardens and Kamla Place. We got Kamla Gardens because of the Metro rail, however, our bill of goods were sold to us then. The resident, we didn't... resident, we didn't want 600 families move for the rail. So we cut a deal with Mel Adams and a former-
Come on, Erby, no stories.
-commaner, Dewey Knight.
I'm giving you a look at the past.
That we would have homeownership. Well, when Comla Garden was built, the residents were told, you won't get relocation monies because you will own the unit, and that will go for down payment. That never happened. Not at all did that. There are people here now who live there that know that was a promise made to them. Well, Commissioner, we ask you, who we have elected to represent us, to bring a meeting to the heart of our community, maybe a workshop, so that we could hear what the wishes and dreams of the communities, what they want. You mentioned that.
Well, is this is?
No, no.
No, ma'am.
This is the first one.
This is an idea.
All right, then. We'll bring another meeting back.
Okay, well, what we want, what we want to accomplish with such a meeting is we want to identify who can sell goods and service for the building of the stadium. Okay, I am a person who support a $15 an hour minimum wage and have spoke at several of their rallies. So there's a large population here that's asking for a decent wage. We would also like to ask that the stadium be a good citizen and bring back wages so that these residents here in this neighborhood can become homeowners like the dream they have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pharaoh Brownlee. I live at 804 Northwest Fifth Avenue, longtime resident of Overtown. I have a, I really wanna know, what is the makeup of this stadium in the short term, and how can we get together, not only in the construction of it, but the pre-development of it, you know, all that good stuff? We need people, our own people, to stand in the organization for us in our interest, you know? The people, like the people who, like the people who did it for the Miami World Center Job Fair, you know, the Alonso Mourning, you know, of those things, all those buildings, the way they did that, we really, we need help with that, and we need jobs, and thank you.
All of that can go on. It doesn't have to be the same people, but as long as you have your job fairs, and that's something that I don't think is unreasonable for them to ask for. But you can't dictate to them who to hire from who not to hire. Okay? But that's one thing. I wanna see that. Okay?
I'm Brenda Yvonne Kell, resident of Overtown, 802 Northwest Fifth Avenue. I'm all in favor for it. The new jobs, the new internship, and whether or not if the residents are gonna be complimented in relocation and first choices of jobs, they should have the opportunity to be first. They're residents here. It's something that you wanna part of us, and there's something we wanna part of you. We don't want you to say, well, we're gonna start with an educational program that is sponsored for internship for our kids, and we never get it. But what we're gonna say is, we'll invite you in if everything is complete. But we don't wanna be pushed aside and not a part of it, you know? Everybody in the system here knows that there's a mixed community here. It's not all black America anymore. We're all willing to work together. If you all gonna come to us, we want you to come to us with not just an idea or a vision. We want reality. We're living off reality now. And our kids, they deserve an opportunity to be a part of the internship, and we want the culture into our culture, so that our kids can be more productive in society, okay? And along with some of our residents. So that's why I asked for the first choice in the job decisions and the relocation of the residents, where they can be comfortable, not feeling like they're being pushed aside or pushed out. This is the main thing they're all feeding off of. Where are they gonna go? Who's gonna help them? Is there any assistance available? But if we all come together, we can make it work, because it's an opportunity for different cultures to get together, and it's, it's a new Overtown.
Okay, thank you.
I wanna make one thing very clear. There are no plans to relocate anybody, all right?
Okay, 'cause I was gonna-
You're gonna keep your homes, all right? And so that's number one. And the, I mean, there are no plans, but there are no plans to relocate anybody, all right? Because they don't need to relocate anybody. And everything else you said about jobs for the kids and young men and women, or the men and women in this community, it will be forefront in any deal that we make with Major League Soccer, okay? That's part of the Economic Development statute, and it's, and you have to have benefit to the community. And that's what, but we're here to hear what are the benefits that you are looking for, so that we can, when we craft our agreement with them, that, you know, it can be incorporated in lack of.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I know I was gonna get too close to home instead of me coming to the 111 building. I am, I am Renita DC Homes. A biggie mama moved aside, DC as in Washington, and this has been a process that I know anticipate. Hold on a second, Commissioner. I'll comment to you. You know, that has been a long time from one neighborhood to the next. I'm two blocks over. I haven't heard everybody give their address, but mine is 350 Northwest La Brea Place. It is my place of business. I am a person with disability. I attend meetings here quite often. I, for many, have began organizing women as the Executive Director of the Women's Association and Alliance Addressing Injustice and Violence Epidemic, as well as women in public housing, education, finance, and development. And I'm proud of that, because I became a business in public houses as a person with disability. When folks come into my neighborhood, the building, they come from my neighboring neighborhoods, it's okay. I already know them. But what I first familiarized myself with was the process called Comprehensive Master Plan. Who I first familiarized myself, because I had no choice to get public housing, become a woman in development, not just a woman who paid $7 out of my monthly rent to have a future home, which we cannot find, but rentals, because people would rather use tax increments for stadiums that become homeless shelters, and others are collecting money for women who are being gentrified out of projects, because in the leasing and contract deals, we do not ensure that our households can afford or meet the qualifications to move in. And as I speak, others may not fully understand, and I know you do, Commissioner, because I miss you at the Economic Development and Prosperity meetings, where we talk about our vision, about the process. But hold on. I mean, but really, I mean, because when it comes to, I have watched development. I don't know where the parking lot meeting was beforehand, but this should have been out of the parking lot, because this community is bigger. But I'll say this. What I don't get to say here now, I like to put in writing, because I'm sick and tired of planning and zoning excluding local blacks. One last thing, you may not know about your own district as well. There's a pattern trend FBI calls the Color of Law. When we continue to make deals and exclude certain people, it becomes a color of law. It's a federal violation. When we're talking about federal properties, federal funds attached to state funds like tax increment, home funds, and shit, and this has been going on entirely. We had no planning and zoning, but the people that applied, this is not, I'm about, yes, ma'am, but this is what happens. This happened in there. No, it's not, because I'm timing them.
And I'm timing you.
Because you've been, yeah, but you've been meeting with them in your office, and like I'm saying, I'm about to close if you give me 30 seconds, but I know you wanna attack me because I'm giving you laws.
No, you gotta talk for seconds.
I have not heard one. Don't disrespect me. I'll walk away. This is what I'm talking about, because the planning and zoning process according to federal law has been usurped, and that's why they attacking my commissioner. She leaving there crying now, because one black woman is representing a whole bunch of us. Most of the people in here that she's met with ain't local and ain't black. So I'm gonna do this here to you, Mayor, because you're always open, and I thank you for a wonderful staff. And you know the women that have laws. My commission ain't said nothing about the women that's homeless, because we ain't got enough affordable rentals. But I'm gonna leave it like this. I got two minutes, though. 183 City MP.
You have three minutes already.
Yeah, I'm closing up. I only need 20 seconds.
You needed 30 seconds, and now you're going to-
But you, but you said something else, and now with the 50.
There's that, and let's finish.
Can I, may I finish?
946th Street. What my concern is, and I've always been, is safety, okay? Because the corner where I stay at, just like Sarah and Mama was talking about, it is very bad. I have to stand right in my back, in my kitchen, and I have seen so many serious accidents. I wanna know, how can you guarantee me that it's gonna be safety, that if I have a two-year-old granddaughter, and there's other neighbors that stays there, have kids that age, that I can feel comfortable and know that I ain't gotta worry about somebody coming in, or a car or something gonna run in my backyard? You understand what I'm saying? Or somebody gonna be coming back shooting and everything? Because that's a bad corner. It's not the issue. I have been calling City Miami to try to get us a traffic light there. Only thing I got of the deal was four stop signs, and that only lasted maybe good there about three weeks. It's a serious-
What corner is that?
This is the corner on Sixth Street and Sixth Avenue. And that's a very bad corner, just like every other week.
Can someone from the staff make sure you-
Sunday is always an accident, very serious accident, because zone pop. I wanna know, how do we know from this stadium that my kids and everybody else's kids are gonna have safety, because they ain't working, today ain't working on it? So how can you guarantee that it's gonna happen?
Well, one of the things about the stadium process is they go through, there'll be a traffic plan, and hopefully a traffic calming around the area. So we're gonna take a look at your issue right now on Sixth Street and your request for a traffic light. I'm not sure it will, it will qualify for a traffic light. There's gotta be a certain amount of traffic that goes through there, but we're gonna take a look at it. We have your address, so we'll come back and talk to you about it.
Okay, it is why you doing it. Is there a possibility that you have maybe some of the residents that stay in there, that maybe could be, have their input about, you know, how this and that should be done, about the traffic?
This is why we're here. We're trying to, we're listening to you, and obviously, this is an issue outside of the stadium, so we're gonna listen to that, too.
And that's why we advertised this meeting. You have to understand, you have two different rooms. You have, you have the residence that's west of Seventh Avenue here, and you have the residence that's east of Seventh Avenue here. So we had to find a spot where it was comfortable for all residents to come to. So when you say that we need to hold the resident, I mean, the meetings in Overtown, I think we are in Overtown. We advertised this. This is how you found out. You found out from flyers we ph-?
No, I just found out.
Or it was on TV. It was on the newspapers. So we-
I just got this, not to cut you off. I just got this flyer today.
I understand that, because we just passed them out yesterday. We've been, we've been working very speedily, trying to get this meeting together, so that you all will be able to say something and have an input.
And only- I would say this, and I make, the only thing is, I'm saying, put yourself in our place.
Yes, ma'am.
You understand what you're making this here?
Yes, ma'am.
Because, hey, the children are our future, and you need that safety for them and everybody else around it. Now, that is very bad.
We agree 100% that children are our future.
Thank you.
We wanna make, we wanna make the future better for our children.
Just don't say it to be pushing me off.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I'm not saying that at all.
I do push. I do research.
If you listen to what I gotta say all the time, this is about our kids and our grandchildren. It always is, okay?
All right. Thank you. That's nice.
Can you go in the back with the team, and he's gonna get all the information you want, and we'll definitely get back to you. Someone will from my office.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Catherine Winston. I live at 701 Northwest Seventh Street Road. Back of my property, the east of my property is on Seaboard Canal. So there's the Seaboard Canal, and there's Seventh Avenue. Would you want that stadium in your backyard? That close? We're talking 200 feet?
I don't know. I may.
Well, then why don't we build it there?
Excuse me?
Why don't we build it there?
I said I may.
That'd be a great idea.
But it might, it might, it might. I may, I may want that. That's a-
All the noise, all the traffic, all the disruption, you know? So this week, there's not a soccer game. Maybe we'll have a rock concert there. Open-air stadium. You're gonna destroy our houses, our property value. How are we ever gonna get out of that unless you guys commit to buy our houses? And we were screwed.
So that's why we're here, to listen to your concerns, so that we can mitigate those concerns.
I don't, I don't want the stadium. I don't want the noise. I don't want the traffic.
We heard that pretty loud and clear. Thank you, sir.
It's ma'am.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Middle name Catherine. Listen.
Good afternoon. My name is Riz Greenfield. I live at 752 Northwest Seventh Street Road in Spring Garden. We've had many challenges to keep historical preservation, and we've won. Recently, there's been a beginning of an invasion in our neighborhood to put up a lot of large buildings, and that is not natural to living in that area. My grandparents moved there in 1921. What I'd like to know is, when you said you were gonna build a stadium, you said a green stadium, what does that mean?
It means environmentally friendly.
And what, can you go into that a little bit?
We plan on being very aggressive at doing everything we possibly can to make sure that this is a building that not only operates efficiently for the environment, but that we try to make sure we have as little impact on the neighborhood as humanly possible.
When the games are on, is it quiet?
No, I hope not.
What about the neighbors? We have to contend with that?
Ma'am, we certainly are going to do everything we possibly can to get your feedback and try to figure out ways where we create as little disruption as humanly possible.
Well, I'm a mother of big soccer fans, and I'd like to see it happen, except I want to preserve my own neighborhood.
The building won't be sound for ten?
It's open air.
Oh, it's open air. I thought you said you were gonna put a cover on it.
Good afternoon. My name is Lillian Slater, 1640 Northwest Fourth Avenue, apartment 10 seat, back of the Coma Center. I would like to know where, why this site was picked. There's plenty more sites, you know, around, and I would like to know this. Commissioner and the mayor, and I would like for you to have a meeting at the Coma Center where all the people can come, so they can hear and know what's going on, because so many rumors going around from one thing to the other. And there's plenty sites around, and I guess you all can look around and see before you get started. I know that you hadn't picked none. For all these years I've been here, since Overtown has been built, so I'd like to know, find some more sites, and look around and see what's happening. But it's good, because if, I hope you get some jobs. I might need a job. I'm old. I might could do something. But I would like to know that we have more meetings, Commissioner, you say, on, down on Third Avenue, so that would be good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slater.
Hello, my name is Sheila Gay. I'm a resident at Coma Garden, Coma Garden, and I've been living up for four years. And it's not a concern of why the stadium is being built, but my concern is, where do the black people go from here? Are, you say the word, you say no relocation. So everybody gonna hold you up to that word.
Sure.
The reason why I live in this community, because I'm a kidney patient, and I picked this community for me to get to the hospital, and it's convenient for me. So I don't have a problem with the stadium, but I wanna know, like, the lady that is just left from up here, most of, all of these older people been here like all their life, and a lot of them now is out on the street because of new building. And, you know, that's my, my children's great, great, great auntie lived here. So that's how I know about Overtown. So I just wanna know, like, no relocation, and with other, that helps the community, like that street that she was talking about, is very deadly. I've been living here for four years, and over that, over the course of four years, I maybe seen like 25 accidents. Y'all can pull the police report up. And that's all I want, I want to know. I actually just jumped out of bed and just came, because I wasn't, I'm not feeling good, but I wanna be here for my community, because this is my community now.
I know. There are a lot of rumors that said that there are people gonna be relocated. There are no plans to relocate anybody. There is no, the property that they're buying, there are no, there's no houses. There's no housing on it, and as they showed you, they could build their stadium on the property that they wish to acquire. So there is no plan to move anybody, and there's no plan for Miami-Dade County to move anybody. As far as I know, there's no plan from the City Miami area.
And there's a lot of good black people in this community. And now that we're integrating a lot of white Spanish people.
Okay, do you know what the car is? Ma'am, ma'am, do you know what property it is? It's the property where you, you have those cars parking to go to the port?
Yeah.
And also the property that has Miami-Dade County trucks parked on it? And the structure there has not been used in years? So there's no homes or anything like that on that property?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Rick Eva. I live at seven twenty-three Northwest Ninth Avenue. I live in the historic district of Spring Garden. And I tell you, the use of walking and the commute, using the metro rail, sounds all rosy and nice, but we all know that traffic will be significantly impacted whether it be in Overtown and Spring Garden. Spring Garden only has two streets to go in and out of, and that's Eleventh Street and Seventh Avenue. And right now, rush hour, it is very difficult for us to move in and out, particularly out. Now, we really need mitigation in regards to traffic lights, one on Seventh Avenue, one on Eleventh Street. I think Ninth Court and Eleventh Street and Seventh Street and Seventh Avenue would be the best. Um, it doesn't matter if you close off Seventh Avenue in regards to the traffic light, it is still needed. It is perpetually blocked by people, even when the light is red, keeping people from, egressing from the neighborhood. And so it's sorely needed, we need, uh, speed tables or speed bumps, and we need traffic calming circles in line with the community. Lady would like to close off many, if not all, the streets. If you can consider, please give us a mitigation and peace, because you saw, well, Sarah, you know, we want our kids safe. And traffic will be going through there, and they will be going through there fast. They will be haring, looking away into the stadium. Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you for your ideas.
Now, we're going to start with the lady with the black sweater on, Akeem is standing behind her, because we said that the meeting will be over at seven. So you're the last in line, you're already there? Sarah?
Hi, my name's Pedro Yunus, I'm a Broward County resident of forty-nine sixty-five Riverside Drive, close to North Florida. Involved heavily in the youth atmosphere of new soccer, and as well as professional soccer and collegiate soccer. And my main concern is really getting an academy involved and selling these kids a path to going professional, because I'm a firm believer in education first. Um, the last thing I want kids doing is joining an academy with this unrealistic hope of them going to professional, just to fund the team, which I see a lot of academies doing. Um, I just want to make sure that the academy isn't a funding for the team and more so to actually help the kids and possibly guide them in the right direction by giving them SAT prep and just doing the right things to get them into a collegiate atmosphere so they can develop as not just athletes, but as people as well.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Alahan Darinson. Address eight nine seventy-six Northwest on Terrace, at your gardens. I honestly think that bringing soccer to Miami would be a great idea. You hear, you know, you see so many people from all ages, Hispanics, you know, American, European. You meet, you meet so many people, and you have something in common. You fought it over the game for ninety minutes. You talk, you come together, and maybe you just become somebody that can talk about so many things and become so, uh, you know, become together, together. You know, it's something unique. Uh, and me myself being a student athlete. Me myself being a student athlete, you know, it's something that I aspire to become as, you know, professional or, you know, how to just support college and that sort of profession. It's something that everybody gets toward it, women and men, and soccer does that. Soccer allows you, you know, to become part of that. And I just want to tell, uh, say that. I have a full support for Miami, United States.
Eric Stevens, two eight nine nine Collins Avenue, Miami Beach. I've been living down here in Florida for ten years, originally from Massachusetts, but we had in Foxborough there, a New England Revolution Stadium with the Patriots. It was great, it's great to see a great start to this process. Um, I was disappointed when Hurricane Stadium was taken away and the whole Marlin, uh, process, but I think that this is great, uh, I think that you guys are doing all the right things. I think there's been good concerns from both sides. I think the residents that live close, you know, where I was from in Massachusetts, there's different neighborhoods that can be blocked off with police. I think there, you know, these soccer games aren't going late into the night. I think we can alleviate a lot of those concerns. I think the parking concerns, hopefully maybe, you know, there's a bunch of parking garages over at the Marlin Stadium, maybe we can get some of the traffic flows to go there and shuttle them over. Um, I think there's a lot of great ideas. I hope you guys will consider, um, when building this, the opportunity for how it may be set up. I didn't see any open ends to the stadium. Um, I also hope that you'll continue to think about the idea of working with the university or having the idea potentially in the future, build it for more seats, to have that potential. Um, for football to be brought back, that's just more events, more things for the community, and I really think that's important, um, bringing this back to Miami. I think that's pretty much everything, uh, thank you guys, continue this process. We really appreciate it.
And thank you.
Hi, my name is, my name is Berlinda Fay Dixon, uh, community advocate and organizer with Overtown. Thank you Commissioner Edmondson for our request to have this meeting this week. Thank you, mayor, thank you for being here. I am not at all opposed to us moving forward in Overtown with economic development, but I do think, and I ask mayor, commissioner, that we put a pause. The reason being is, the land that you have, that the county owns, we have a housing crisis. We have a rent problem. We have a infrastructure, housing condemned issue here in Overtown. Comer Place is, I have canvas and knock on door to door, is infested, falling apart. This is right where that stadium would be. We need to use the property and all the land we have left to try to build affordable homeownership, a path to homeownership. Okay, we know we have a lot, quite a few habitat projects here. Well, we need to do something with the land that we have in the sense of habitat-type townhouses, because we need homes. We don't need a stadium, I'm glad you guys want to come, okay? But I'm a renter, I'd like to be an owner. The stadium is gonna come, is gonna absorb all the land values, and then people are gonna start flipping it. The county has a due diligence responsibility, okay, for our community that we deserve. We have been here, we're fighting, we love our community, and we would like to be owners too. Not just the Beckham Group owning a park. We want our land back. The county should be trying to, to get with the developers to build true housing for our residents. And that's what I want to bring to the table. I mean, I appreciate the Beckham Group finding the land, but if you guys all drive over there right now, okay? Take a drive through Overtown, and you see the lights, okay? That are one twenty and not two forty, that can be changed to help our community. Some pressure washing, to trim our trees properly like they do in other communities. If, if a little bit more emphasis would be put on our people and the land that we have left, and even the investors that have bought, to buy some of that back in collaboration with the city, okay, and help us. So that's what I want to bring to the table.
Okay, Mr. Lou, can you make sure you have your staff look at the Comer Place?
Because there is a ton of, there's also an auction coming up with more county properties. I don't know if you guys know that. Please look into that, but I know that in our inner cities, we need housing. And I would ask, and I'm holding the county accountable, to look at all of those parcels. And we are drafting a letter, we've asked the Oversight Board to please send a letter to the county, okay, to cease all sales of all county-owned property in lieu of looking for a way that we can have affordable homeownership.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Berlinda Fay Dixon, my address is eleven twenty-eight Northwest Seventh Avenue here in Overtown, Miami, Florida.
Thank you.
I love my community.
Well said. Thank you, Liz.
I'm Stacy Anne. My address is four five one Northwest Seventh Street. But I'm also representing another address, which is seven eleven Northwest Sixth Avenue. As a parent and a resident. Where.
No, go ahead, use your list.
Um, you brought upon us a sketch or diagram of the stadium, but yet still you said you don't have a plan. Here is something I want you to put in consideration. Your stadium would be built on Sixth Avenue to Eighth Avenue?
Seventh Avenue.
To Seventh Avenue. There is an aftercare program that's called Touching Miami with Love.
Respond to the director today.
Okay, that's right, yeah, I just noticed, they are here too. That's right there, so I want to know, what's the benefit we can get from the soccer stadium? And if so, what's gonna happen with Touching Miami with Love with that traffic? Where would your entrance be, where would your exit be?
We're already speaking with Touching Miami, as a matter of fact, I spoke to the Beckham Group already about them, so we are already talking about that. That's why we're having this meeting.
Thank you.
We need to know from everyone what their concerns are. You bring in your concerns, and I appreciate that. Uh, Touching Miami, we're already working with.
Okay, thank you.
Again, as you see, we, we have been working with the various groups in the community, and just, just today, we've met with some. Uh, this is something that just started two weeks ago. And when we say there's no plans, there's no plans, you can't draw up plans in two weeks. Now, when the Beckham Group comes back again next year, I expect to see something. When I first started, I said to you all, I am not in support yet, I am not endorsing, because I have to see something. And I have not seen anything. Yes, I want soccer, I would love to have it in my district. But I still need to see some plans. And they have, they have committed that when they come back next year, they will meet with me to show me something, it won't be complete plans, because you can't do them that quickly. But I'm, I'm having this meeting because I wanted to get suggestions, ideas, advice from my community. And that's what I was looking for today, and we did get some, I think we got a lot. And we will definitely take everything into consideration, but it's gonna take time. I promise you, I will be back, even if the Beckham Group is not here, they'll have someone representing them, but we'll be back. This is the first of the meetings. And there will be a series of meetings. And with that, I want to thank, uh, Tim for coming out, and he flew in.
Welcome.
He flew in. So you know, that was a long flight that he had. That's why we just started getting the flyers on yesterday. Because that's when I did approve them, and the mayor approved them. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I make some closing remarks before you close?
Yes. I think the mayor wants to make some as well. And Tim may want to. But again, this is the beginning. And I think you all need to bear with us, this is the first time, the first time, and this takes precedence, that we've held a community meeting before any plans were done. So you all have to see this as someone looking out for you. And, and that's what I have to say, I want to thank the mayor, and he has been working hard. I'm not gonna stand here as if he has not been doing anything in the past two weeks. He has kept me abreast, he has not pushed me out, as you may hear from certain people. And I have had input. And my main input was bringing it to this community. Uh, Commissioner Barrero has been, been active as well. So I, I just want you all to know. With that, will that, who wants to, Commissioner Barrero or the mayor?
Thank you, um, well, first of all, I have to thank all the residents that came out and gave your input. Um, this has been my first meeting with, and I'm, private or public meeting with Tim and the group since the decision of moving the site from, uh, the, uh, the Marlin site to here. I got a call from them, they told me that they were not interested any further in, in, in the Marlin site, and obviously I was a little disappointed, being a commissioner from that area, and, and wanting them, supporting them, but, uh, it is, uh, their venture. And, um, and, and, and they said they were, they want, they asked for a meeting, I had not been able to give them a meeting, I was a little too busy with some issues. Uh, but, um, but this I wanted to hear, when I heard from Commissioner Edmondson having a public meeting, I wanted to be here to hear the concerns from the community. I, I want to thank her for, for giving me this opportunity to be here and, and be part of this meeting and hear from the community. And, um, I think your concerns have been loud and clear. We're gonna, uh, take them into consideration, address them, um, and, and move forward. And as I said at the beginning, this is just the beginning of this conversation. Um, with that, thank you very much, Commissioner Edmondson, for having this.
Thank you, Commissioner Edmondson, also Commissioner Barrero and Tim, thank you for, for being here. You know, there's a lot of people and skeptics in, in the crowd that what has happened in Overtown in the past, and there's a lot of promises made and a lot of promises were, were broken. And I can tell you that that's not what, what I'm about, and it's not, certainly not what Commissioner Edmondson or Barrero are about. We're here at the beginning of a process, uh, not at the end. There aren't, there aren't any completed sketches or anything that says, okay, we've already drawn up the deal, this is what, here's what you're gonna get. We want to know what, how this will benefit your community, you know? How acceptance, uh, will you accept this, will you embrace it, will they embrace you? And, uh, and now, you know, now that we have some ideas, because this is not the last meeting we're gonna have, then we can incorporate that into our agreement with, with Major League Soccer if the agreement is gonna go through. And, uh, and there's a lot of details to, to be worked out, but we're, you know, we're here to listen to you, we've heard some of your concerns, we've heard some good ideas of traffic and how we can mitigate that, how we can incorporate the community into the building, the jobs, the training, the academy, you know, and make that a part of the fabric of this great community called Overtown, and this historic community called Overtown. And, uh, and I can envision a day that when Major League Soccer is, has been transmitted around the world, they will say, you know, here's the David Beckham Club, I don't know what the name of the club is yet, uh, but, you know, the Miami Club, you know, playing, you know, out of the historic Overtown neighborhood. Uh, and, uh, and it'll be seen around the world. But, you know, we're not there yet. Uh, there's still a lot of work to be done, there's still a lot of input to be, to be gotten from the community, and make sure that there's community benefit, and the community benefits from, uh, from this project. And it does, it's not at a detriment to the community, but a benefit to the community, not only to this community, but the entire community we call Miami-Dade County. And with that, you know, I want to thank you. I know, Tim, if you want to make, make any other statement, a closing statement?
Uh, just, just thank everybody, I appreciate the input.
Well, thank you, thank you very much for, for attending. We will have other meetings like this in the neighborhood. Uh, thank you, good night, may God bless you all.